We are here, myself, the Assemblywoman Sampa, as concerned Pattersonians. People that have been born and raised in the city of Patterson. Not members of the Democratic Party or Assemblypeople. We are here because we care. We've raised our kids here, in the city of Patterson. We live here. We go to the beauty salons here. We go to the barber shops. We shop here. We eat here. So there is not a case that we are down here to maneuver or change anybody's ideas, whether it may be. All I ask is, after May 10th, that we come together. I think real leadership will arise after this election. So the people that man, thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Council President Bill McCoy, Representative of the 3rd Ward. I'm delighted to be here this evening. Let me also thank our Assemblypersons, the NAACP, for arranging for this opportunity, where we could come to meet with you and share our ideas, hear your questions. I have been serving in City Council until July 1st of 2000. Prior to that, I served on the Board of Education. I was not born in the United States, but fortunately, this country is. I was able to migrate here after I lost my dad at the age of 16. And my mom moved me to the strange town called Patterson, which I've come to love. My first day was at John F. Kennedy High School, and where I met Sharon Smith. And she literally rescued me and changed my life in terms of my relationship to my classmates and everyone else. So here I am today, representing the 3rd Ward. A graduate of John F. Kennedy High School. Attended then William Patterson College, now William Patterson University. Graduated an accounting degree and worked 21 years for New Jersey Bell, now Verizon. And subsequently, in the Internal Audit Department, did a stint at the National Exchange Carrier Association, NECA, where I designed the E-Rate program for the nation. A $3.25 billion program that we designed from scratch to implementation, and that program is still running today. Did about 20, 15 years at Internal Audit, and went back to Bell Atlantic. And subsequently, in 2001, moved to the Jersey Board of Education as their chief auditor, or supervisor more, as the audit department. Subsequently, was promoted to the Chief Auditor of Early Childhood, which is the position that I'm currently in. That's a $27 million budget that we managed for the department. I'm here to tell you that experience does matter. Sound experience and proven leadership does matter. This is not as easy job as you see it. There's many issues and concerns behind the scenes that a councilperson has to deal with. I have that experience. I have the background and the know-how to deliver on those promises. And I've been doing that for the last 15 and a half years. I put my record, which you'll see before you, and asked you that you evaluate me not on the record and the commentary, but on the actual record and the work that has been done. And I think you will agree with me that Bill McCoy has done his job. And I ask for your consideration on May 10th, Row 3A. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I also would like to thank the Assemblypersons and the NAACP for allowing us to come before you and share our views and our philosophy. So I'll start by giving you a little bit about myself. I'm currently a Commissioner on the Board of Education, where I've served two terms. On the 20th of April marks my sixth year. I've served as Vice President twice. And since I've been on the Board of Education, I've chaired some key committees, like Policy, Legal, CUSAC, which is the committee that helps to bring local control back to the city of Patterson. I am the father of six. Two college graduates, two in college, one in high school, and one in elementary school. So education in my household matters, just like Patterson Public Schools. I'm the founder of Boys and Girls Leadership Summits, which we've done every year. Couple of weeks ago was our sixth year, where we bring young men and women in and mentor them and give them workshops on leadership and educational and personal responsibility. I'm also the co-founder and Vice President of Patterson Cares, the organization that helps the needy, not just feeding them, but directing them to the resources to help them with any of their issues. Also the co-founder of an organization called The Village, which we actually go out and walk the streets and talk to those people who are experiencing issues, those people who are involved in illicit activities, because we can't solve anything if we don't know what the issues are and I don't know why you do what you do. So that's important. I'm running because the 3rd Ward needs change. The incumbent has been there for 16 years. He's asking for four more. I'm only asking for four years to prove myself. If I can't do what I say I'm going to do, or if I don't do what I'm saying I'm going to do, I will be on your side to lead the charge against you. So on May 10th, I'm looking for your support, and my row is 4A.
Thank you, and welcome everyone for being here tonight. Thank you Assemblywoman and the NAACP. My name is Flavi Rivera. I live at 218 Eighth Avenue. I'm a taxpayer and a resident of Patterson for a long time. I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself in about two minutes. I attended East High Street, where I played baseball for four years. I went on and went to obtain a National Degree in Accountants from Ralph's College. From there, I'm going to stick to the relevant work experience. I've worked in many places. I worked for three years, three and a half years in the city of Patterson, where I served as internal auditor, and also worked with grants there while I was there. Went up to the county, served as coordinator of federal state aid for a while. I oversaw all the fiscal aspect of all the county grants. And I'm currently serving as Passaic County's Treasurer. Why I'm telling you this? Because I bring a lot to the table. I bring 10 years of municipal finance experience. And how does that come handy to the council? Well, I've been part of city business for a long time. And those of you who see me there, I see many of you attend City Council. I attend workshops. I'm not just there for the camera. I attend workshops and regular meetings. Over these past eight years, I've been watching city business closely, and I've noticed how we've been operating. We cannot continue to operate the city the way we've been operating. We need checks and balances in the city. You just don't work with administration just by voting yes on everything without questioning. Remember, we've got to make a decision, and we've got to look after the best interest of residents and taxpayers. And I don't see that happening in the council. Every time something goes wrong, the word I hear from the council is, "We were not aware." Well, you know what? If you guys feel like me on May 10th, I'm going to make sure that I'm aware. I'm going to use the investigative powers that the council has under the former government to make the decisions and look into monthly reports, to make sure that we're measuring everything the administration is doing. Example, and introduce, we've been presented with responsible budgets for the past 10 years, and no one in the councils asks anything. How could the administration come to you and say, "Look, this is the budget we're presenting to you, but this is not going to be the final budget?" There is no such thing. That document represents the level of service each of us are going to be receiving. I'm going to give you one example. City Council's budget salary line, he's overstated. He was introduced overstated by $200,000. He was adopted overstated by $100,000. But then you had the recreation budget that has been cut for hundreds of thousands. You guys wrap it up? All right, I'll wrap it up. We have more time to discuss our city issues. Thank you.
Commissioner President, please.
To the NAACP, to Assemblywoman Sampa, Assemblyman Orkley. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of this evening. To the audience, I renew greetings from the 5th Ward. My name is Crystal Cleese, and I am a Commissioner on the Patterson Board of Education, serving my fifth year. Within these five years of serving on the Patterson Board of Education, I have served as Vice President twice. I also bring with me 21 years of corporate experience. I worked at Sony Electronics for 21 years. I have a Bachelor's of Science degree in Business Administration. So I bring that corporate business experience with me. I also bring to the table with me 33 years of community service. I am a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, where I have been serving this community since I returned home from college 30 years ago. So I've been serving my community as a community servant. I am not a politician. I don't claim to be a politician. I am a community servant. I am just like you and your neighbors. I want the best for me, just as well as the best for you. I also served as a Commissioner on the Passaic Valley Water Commission, where I am in my third year, and I've served as President of that board. I am here vying for the position of Councilwoman on the 5th Ward, because for far too long, the 5th Ward has been underrepresented. We've had no one at the table fighting for us. So now we need to put someone there that's able, willing, have the voice, have the heart of the people, and know how to get the job done. And I am that person. I am Crystal Cleese. I am 3A on the ballot, 5th Ward.
Before we go any further, I just wanted to make a point. We invited every candidate for a council, each Ward, to come out this evening via email and voice messages, or voice contact directly. The only candidate that let us know that they would not be here this evening due to a prior engagement was Commissioner Alyssa Metz. So she did contact us and let us know that she would not be here this evening. Everybody else was notified. Whatever individuals are not dependent, we have not found out yet. Next, we have Commissioner Wimmy Biese.
Hi, good evening. It is indeed an honor and a pleasure to be here before you. My name is Wendy Guzmán, and I am candidate for the 5th Ward in the city of Patterson. I actually did find out today about the forum. There was a little miscommunication, as per two events. They had a wrong phone number for me when they came to the calling. But I did find out this afternoon, and I said I was going to make it a priority to be here. Although I do have a meeting agreed scheduled previously for tonight at 8 o'clock in a household that I have to go to, I said I will go, because I know there are voters and residents who are depending on each and all of us. And just because I was notified today, it's no excuse for me not to be here, just like everybody else, I was notified in advance. I served seven years on the Patterson Board of Education, completely voluntary. I got elected in 2008, and re-elected in 2011. If you look at Patterson Public Schools, many changes were done, and it's something that Wendy Guzmán cannot take all the credit for. Credit was done, and everything that was done here in the city of Patterson was done as a team. And that's a problem that we have here in the city right now. Too many people want to focus on "I, I, I did this," and not enough of "we." We are a community. We are one. We are Patterson. I'm a born and raised Pattersonian, living in the 5th Ward my entire life. I am raising an eight-year-old daughter, also in the 5th Ward. She lives with me. I support her. And I have no plans on leaving the city of Patterson, because this is all I know. This is my life. This is where my family migrated, to where they came to the United States. This is where we have developed and grown into the family that we are. I want to serve our community. I want to sit in the 5th Ward seat, but work for the entire city of Patterson, because it's not just about the 5th Ward. Yes, changes need to be made in the 5th Ward, but it impacts all the other surrounding areas that we live in. I want to be that Councilwoman, how I have served on the Board of Education. I'm not new to this. I've been around. I have seen and met a lot of people that have been able to help many people. But I want to be the Councilwoman that you can depend on, and you can always count on, and will always be visible for each and every one of you, not just the 5th Ward, but the entire city. Thank you.
Next, we have candidate for the 5th Ward, Louis Valas.
My name is Louis Valas, candidate for the 5th Ward of the city of Patterson. As you know, I'm not a new one in the 5th Ward. I'm not new in Patterson. I'm being always involved, whether it's the issues of the 5th Ward. You have seen me out here. You have seen me in the council meeting, and you see me where the needs are. I don't need to work when I win this seat, because I'm even working for that seat all alone. I'll be representing the 5th Ward without being getting paid, without being assigned to the seat, and without getting voted to that seat. People know that. We cannot be fooled. We need to move forward, the 5th Ward. I have preached the word of unity, and every message, not only at election time, way before election time. I have paved the road to be not sitting in the seat of the 5th Ward, to work for the 5th Ward. So I'll be there. I'm experienced. I'll be there. I need to get trained for the job. So I'm proud to say that Patterson is the place that I have raised my kids. It's the place that I love. It's the place that I've been dedicated, and it's the place I'm going to represent, from the 5th Ward to all the way around the 5th Ward. I don't have no border to serve, and I don't have no preference who I'm going to serve. When I'm going to serve, I don't serve flags. I don't serve what nationality you are. I don't serve who you are. I serve the needs that you come forward to me. So on May 10th, please, don't get fooled. Vote 1A, the true and real literature for the 5th Ward. God bless.
Next, we have our incumbent Councilman of the 5th Ward, Andres Seguin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Patterson is the only home that I've ever known. And my wife and I are raising our two daughters in the very home that I grew up in, and we're also taking care of my mother who's stricken with Alzheimer's disease. When I first ran for City Council, our goal was to bring neighbors together. And I'm proud to say that we did just that. We brought neighbors together into the 6th Ward, dressing more family-friendly and business-friendly. At School 25, they needed a playground. So we raised the money and recruited hundreds of volunteers and built a playground for children in the area to have a safe place to play. And I'm proud that after our efforts of lobbying PSENG, they've installed lights so that children can play beyond 8:00 p.m. under the supervision of their parents. And the neighbors in the area are safer as a result. We also opened up Patterson's newest preschool in South Patterson. That was the former site of a notorious nightclub. It was compromising the quality of life for the people that lived in that area. And so we shut it down, and we turned it to the most positive outcome possible for Patterson children. And now, 75 young men, women, three, four-year-olds have an opportunity to get quality education in a place that was notorious at one point. And we also are proud of the fact that we introduced an ordinance, the Commercial Perky Ordinance. Pastor Clayton, you should call and help us get this through the council, so that if you are in a designated hotspot and crime statistics show that there's a great deal of activity that's taking place that's undesirable, we will regulate your hours of operation, and you will close by midnight. And I'm proud to say that sometime after the adoption of this ordinance, that the crime in those areas has been reduced by 79%. I see some constituents in the back, in the People's Park section. They're paying flood insurance for many years, and a flood has not occurred for over 50 years. So I joined forces with the Congressman, and we were able to provide the necessary relief for those constituents in that area. And so, ladies and gentlemen, it's about bringing neighbors together to produce positive outcomes for people in Patterson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor. We all thought an hour and a half of thank you, Pastor. Come now, I see Pastor Ken Large, or Councilman Large. I see our fellow everywhere Councilman Alex Mentes. We have Commissioner Earl Moss, EKZ, and Commissioner Dr. Janet Bah. Next, we have incumbent Councilman of the 1st Ward, Michael Jackson.
Thank you, Assemblywoman Sampa. I apologize for my tardiness. I had to pick my daughter up, and as I'm sure all of you know, my father duties come first, but I appreciate the opportunity. First, before I get started, I want to take the elephant out of the room. These campaign seasons have become more about individuals, more about smear, more about lies, more about speculation than the actual issues. We haven't had an opportunity to really focus about the issue, focus on the issue, because we've had a lot of, you know, things that should not be involved in the campaign. So as I had to clear up earlier, you know, there's been a story about how I've stolen $38,000, or have not paid $38,000 tax lien, or I stole $140,000 from the city. But I want to begin by talking about the fabrication of those things, because I want to speak to the credibility that I bring to the table. The process that happened was, my restaurant, I've been negotiating terms for the past eight, nine months, which the city has been a part of. And of course, anyone who was negotiating, I'm not going to put myself in a losing position and pay a $40,000 tax bill. The citizens of Patterson never get slighted on those tax bills. Those tax bills are sold at a premium, and every person who owns that bill pays an 18% interest rate on their tax bill. We all know that. So I want to begin by clearing that up. Jacksonville's not lost. In fact, I'm looking forward to the celebration of all of you can be here. And I want to clear up the air on how this campaign season has been running. What I wanted to do when I came forward to run for 1st Ward Councilperson is do what all of us wanted to see happen. Make sure that our city is moving in the right direction. Being progressive, represent you well, not create more dissension amongst the council as well as the administration. I believe I've done a good job of doing that. The very first day that I've been there, I hit the ground running, and I represented our community well. This time, come on.
We want to remind the candidates that they have a little, you have two minutes for your introduction. So we apologize for that. And I'd like to also welcome former Commissioner Corey Teague, who is here. We thank Commissioner Teague. He actually got it started a few years ago. We also have with us former Commissioner, I think I have Dula, is she here? Here she is. Good evening, here. Yes, good evening. We also have with us former Councilman Ed Cotton, that will be here. Our next candidate for the 4th Ward is Ms. Veronica Vales.
I want to thank everyone for coming here tonight. Sorry, this is a little bit. I want to thank you, and to everybody in Shavon's Center. My name is Veronica Vales. I'm 31 years old. I'm a graduate from the State County Community College with a criminal justice degree applying signs. I also went to my, I also attended Montclair State University. Something is wrong. I attended Montclair State University. I graduated top 15% of my class in 2014 with a major in Justice Studies, Justice System, Concentration and Paralegal, two minors, Family Justice and Psychology. I don't think it's going to help. I've been a resident of the 1st Ward for 12 years, and I've witnessed firsthand lack of leadership. I'm a mother of four children, and because of them, I'm doing this. I'm going to stand up. I'm going to fight for my community. I'm going to fight for every mother out there and for their children. Our children are dying in our very own streets. The parks are disgusting. The streets are dirty. The vandalism, the crime, and it never stops, and it never ends. As a Councilwoman, I'll work full-time. I'll be patrolling the area. I will be making those phone calls and making sure that there is accountability and that our parks and our streets are safe and clean once again. Thank you, have a nice, thank you.
Next, we have with us, this is always a tough one for me, candidate for the 6th Ward, Al Aldez.
Thank you, Assemblywoman, oh, thank you, Assemblywoman Shavon Sampa, the Patterson NAACP, and everyone for coming out here today. My name is Al Aldez. I am a candidate for the 6th Ward City Council, Board of Raze in South Patterson, right on Main Street. One of seven kids, my family came here from Palestine with nothing, and brought us up and said, "Education is key." I'm an educator at heart. I'm not a politician. I'm not the perfect politically correct person you ever meet. I went to Passaic County Tech, was a wrestler, graduated from PCTI, went to William Patterson University. They came back to Passaic County Tech and became a teacher and a coach. I probably coached some of your grandchildren, some of your nieces and nephews. They'll know who I am. And I gave back and coached, and that was my passion. Then I got involved in the community in South Patterson, in the 6th Ward, to make a change. And now we're really going to, because I'm fed up with what's going on in city government. We can't agree on things for the better of our community and our city. Our streets are dirty. Crime is up, and they'll give you statistics where people don't not feel safe. When a young child is dribbling basketball on 21st St., and he gets robbed for his basketball, and that's the headlines in our newspapers, something's wrong. I want to bring new energy, new ideas, and concentrate on what really matters, and that's our city, our streets, and our children. When I hear our athlete and my former student say, "Coach, why do you still live in Patterson? Something's wrong. Why do you come back? We want to go out this city. We want to go to college and come back and move out of the city." We need change throughout the night. I will give you my platform to answer your questions, and we'll go on from there. Thanks again, and we'll talk more.
Next, we have our incumbent Councilman of the 4th Ward, Ruby Cotton.
Thank you. I would like to first say thank you to our Assemblywoman Sampa, to our Assemblyman Benji Wimbley, to the NAACP for putting on this debate tonight for us, for you to be able to pick and choose who you think is the right candidate for the City Council. My name is Ruby Cotton. I'm the Councilwoman for the 4th Ward now. I am running for my reelection, and I can say, tell you one thing, that it has not been easy. But I have worked diligently. I have worked tirelessly to make sure that that 4th Ward has been represented very well. There's a lot of things on the agenda, and one thing I can say about the 4th Ward, it is unique and it's different from some of the others. But I know what I need to do. And one of the biggest things for my Ward is the quality of life. Once I can get my quality of life down, and I can tell you, one of my biggest orders that we put together with some of my colleagues is the hotspot business curfew. Believe me, my people in my 4th Ward in certain areas are now able to go to bed. And I can tell you one thing is that I walked my streets. I'm not afraid to walk my streets. And I say that to everyone, that the 4th Ward is being well-represented. I have constantly formed more block association than any other Ward. I have used my department heads. I have used my police department. I have used everyone that I could possibly use to make sure I get as much information out to my people in the 4th Ward as I can. And I can say one thing about the 4th Ward, it is improving. And when I have meetings in different parts of the city and in different parts of the Ward, I hear what they're saying to me, that they see an improvement with the quality of life. So I want to say thank you again for having us. I will answer any more questions. And like I said, I have worked tirelessly to make sure that the 4th Ward is represented well, because I represent you on the city level, county level, and the state level. And I have to represent that 4th Ward. Thank you.
At this time, for the people who have just come in, we had a slight mix-up with the room arrangements, so we had to move everything from one room to this room. So we are under time constraints. We asked and thanked the housing authority for having us here, the Heritage. But at this time, we're going to, we have questions of the Assemblymembers, for the council people, but we're going to cut back on our questions. And just once again, a total disclaimer, this is not a party event. This is sponsored by the NAACP and ourselves as residents and lifelong Pattersonians here in the city. by the NAACP and ourselves as residents and lifelong Pattersonians here in the city of Patterson. So at this time, we'll have our first question by Senator Shavana Sumpin.
Councilmembers and council candidates, Patterson has experienced over fifty percent increases in taxes over the last five years. What will you do to alleviate the burden on the homeowners who are currently suffering? And we'll start, if you all can stand and give your answers in to save us time, you have one minute to answer, I will keep the time. So we'll start with you.
At this moment, I can't tell you directly, but I'm sure what the answer lies somewhere in the budget. We have no idea what we're working with when we start on July first because it's a temporary budget. It doesn't outline directly what we're going to be spending and how we're going to be spending it. If we keep appropriating temporary budget after temporary budget, we do get to February when we're off. We are way off. And we didn't even know where we needed to rent it or where we needed to appropriate additional dollars. So one of the things that we could look forward to is to take care of the budget issue and not find ourselves in February or March with the final adoption of the budget.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dow.
For the last sixteen years in a row, our taxes have been up. When Martin Barnes was alive, may he rest in peace, he was able to stabilize the taxes for five years in a row. There's no excuse to raise the taxes every single year. We all live month to month, day to day, week to week, whatever the case may be. But one of the most important things that this council is going to have to do this time is to force the administration to introduce their budget within the first four weeks, adopt eighty percent of that in the first quarter of the year. You know what your last budget was, you know you're going to need at least eighty percent. You use a conservative number from the state and hopefully whatever else they give you will be a gift for you. That's the first thing we need to do in the city of Patterson.
Thank you.
It's very nice to really talk rosy about the budget, but this town has been in distress cities maybe the last twenty, twenty-five years. That's really the major problem. We are on welfare assistance from the state and the alphabet you need to know is DCA and they have control of the process. This last round with regards to the increase, DCA was saying to us, "You have to raise your local contribution to seven point one percent and if you don't, we're going to reduce your transitional aid to force you to that seven point one percent." We were negotiating that process down to cutting up the budget and some adjustments to five point eight percent in order to get our award of twenty-five million dollars from the state. The only way to get out of that situation is to grow the economy. Economic development is the key and we need an effective economic development director. And we need to look at the examples that we've seen before in the third ward where we convert condemned property into taxable ratables for the city of Patterson.
As, as long as we, we have government spending that is greater than the revenue that we are bringing in, we'll continue to have a structural deficit. Economic development is the key and how you do that, although we do have a department, an economic development department, we need to create, and what I've been talking about is a CDC, a nonprofit, that is strictly focused on bringing in business, growing business that's here and bringing in revenue. It's a nonprofit that can get money in ways or get funding in ways that the city can't. Similar to what they've done in Jersey City, similar to what they've done in Newark, and similar to what they've done in Times Square. And if you are familiar with Times Square in the eighties and Times Square today, that CDC has grown Times Square and it is viable entity in the city of New York. So those are some of the things we can do to relieve the tax burden on the citizens.
To start off, one minute is a little short, but I'm going to try to make it quick. First of all, we need to stop approving irresponsible budgets. At the beginning of the year, the council is presented with budgets that are overstated and they just keep approving it so the administration can make the cuts at the end. We got to stop that from the beginning. We got to start analyzing on a monthly basis, check your expenditure reports so we can stop the waste of spending. They are saying, "We were not aware," is not good enough. We need to start enforcing ordinances. By doing so, you improve quality of life and at the same time, you bring additional revenue. Again, don't take my word for it, just look at the budget. Our revenues from the courts have gone down tremendously, but the bills to the taxpayers have gone, have gone up. We need to start looking at what the administration is doing. Also, I've been an advocate for this, about creating a sewer utility, it's not a separate entity, it's just treating the accounting a little different for a sewer because we have nonprofits, nonprofits that don't pay taxes, but they pay sewer. We have schools, county, they all pay, again, one minute is too short, but the bottom line is we got to change the way we do business in the city. If we leave it the way it is, we're not going to see a change.
What everyone has already said is actually correct. We need to look at the budget early, we need to ask more questions, but we also need to go to the tax assessor and to the administration. All our homes went through a revow and we need to find out where they came up with these calculations because going through the revow was supposed to help alleviate the tax burden on, on the citizens and that did not happen. So what we need to do is ask more questions and we need to figure out where they're coming up with their calculations that caused such an increase in our taxes this year.
To me, I see it all as a process, it's all steps, it's everything is correlated and comes together on and one part. If we look at it, if we stopped depending so much on the state and on the transitional aid, we wouldn't have the problem. That's what happens right now. When you depend on someone, you have to follow their orders. And their order were, for you to get the money for transitional aid, you have to raise taxes. The solution is to actually bring in corporations that are going to invest in this city, in the city of Patterson, that are going to employ Patterson residents. But how are we going to make that happen? We need to first work on the safety of our streets, on the cleanliness of our street and actually attract these companies to come here. When these companies come into the city of Patterson and actually more revenue come in, our taxpayers can actually be labeled and not all of the burden will be falling on our homeowners and our taxpayers and our vendors because when the homeowners get tax increases, the rent also increases for the people that rent in the community.
It is a question of, but is this place reality? I want to commend the fighting chair, Mr. Kent Morris, because he has done a great job to open the eyes for those that sit in the council to not approve budget that faces increases in taxes. First, when I become a councilman of the fifth ward, I get to stay collected with my co, with my colleagues to talk about the budget, to see where we could find the core services I'm employing for our city and also to identify what is that essential services our city and start calling from there for we could manage a great budget and send back a recommendation to administration that we need to work together to move the city forward.
A number of candidates mentioned economic development as being the answer and they are right. Patterson is a city built on industry. We used to manufacture cotton and silk and unfortunately I've manufactured anything quite some time to that level. When I was council president, we adopted an ordinance to establish a department that dealt exclusively with economic development. We also opted in to the Garden State Growth Zone Program where we give incentives to investors to come and develop in Patterson. Also, we adopted a resolution in support of a hotel in this city. We're the third largest city in the state. At the very least, we should have a hotel. It would generate revenue and it would generate jobs. So ladies and gentlemen, economic development is very important. If you'll drive down the streets of South Patterson and Main Street, you'll see a new project on almost every other block. And also on Twenty-first Avenue, we're seeing development as well. And so economic development throughout all six wards will help us finally resolve our budgetary woes.
Obviously, it starts with more responsible spending, but at the same time, we also have to look at all the services that we render and we offer to all the surrounding communities, all of the nonprofit organizations that's in our town that don't pay a dollar into our tax revenue. We have a number of major organizations that grow up, they pay mon, they pay six-figurationalities to people who don't live in our community. People often talk about welfare, I don't see it as welfare. We offer, we render a tremendous amount of services to all the surrounding communities and we get no credit for it. Our, our assemblyman is often referred to Patterson as the city of angels. We, we take care of everyone else's problems and yet the state continues to cut each and everywhere, each and every avenue, whether it's education or it's our municipal budget. We need to be able to not only align with the council and the administration, but align with those that we have in place on the state level to fight for more resources that Patterson
I believe if the tax burden of the taxpayers, economic development is the key, right? But let's be realistic about this. Who wants to invest in a city where the crime is high, the city is filthy and the taxes are high? Think about it. What we need to do is start cleaning our streets. We need to clean our city, make it safe so that investors can come and bring, provide everything for our city. We need to stop saying yes to everything without outweighing the pros and cons. But as a councilwoman, I would work hard to stabilize taxes and I would not hope for further tax increases. We would lobby and find other alternatives.
One way, and some of the council candidates stated, we need to reduce spending. Right off the bat, council, the council controls the line items and the budget that comes through from the administration. If the council comes again, they can reduce any line item they want to reduce the tax burden on the taxpayers and that's the truth. As a planning board member, we approved hundreds of millions of dollars in new development, the St. Joe's Hotel, the developments of South Patterson, the new Seven-Eleven on Route Twenty. But the problem is, we bring in these new ratables and then spending goes up. So you bring in some new ratables in and then the administration in the city spends more money. The council needs to work to reduce line item, reduce spending that will immediately help out. New development doesn't happen overnight. A Walmart's not going to drop down on Route Twenty and then we're going to get the ratables. These projects takes years to come into fruition and that's where the ratables come in. But in the beginning, we need to cut the spending, cut as soon as possible, that will be the immediate tax relief to residents.
Some of, I know we need to cut back on our tax, on our budget, but there's certain things in the budget that we cannot get around and that's payroll. We have to make payroll regardless of whether we want to or not and that's how we get emergency appropriations. Let's not make payroll and see what's going to happen to the city of Patterson. There's certain things that we need to pay, pension payment, there's certain things that got to be paid, social security payment, there's certain things that got to be paid and whether we want to put together something, we got to pay certain things. So I say that what we need to do in the beginning is when we start out with our budget, let's start with half of that transitional aid amount and let's see what we can work with. If we can start out with half, because there's certain things we got to make emergency appropriations to make payments for payroll. Do not make payroll and you will see how fast the federal government will be in our city.
All right, this question, and as I said, we have time constraints, so I'm going to cut back on my questions and get to them. There are many duplicating questions on the cards. A lot of them, I hope they answered when it came to taxes, reavow, things that make you have an idea where they're at. This is for our incumbents and Councilman Corey Teague, this first, and then following that, any other incumbents that are here, Councilman Seiya, Jackson, and Cotton. All right? At this time, can you please give our audience a snapshot of what significant legislation you have authored during your term?
We have directed legislative action in a number of years. You've heard about the hotspot legislation that was introduced, made significant changes in how the operation goes. Most of us, in terms of legislative action, you're doing changing laws and regulations. We've had tons and tons of that. The real work has to do with making sure that the things that come before us are properly evaluated, presented, and make sure changes happen in our, in our city. And that's where the expertise comes in, that's where the leadership comes in, in wrestling with those difficult questions and answering them going forward.
The first ordinance I introduced when I got on the council was the abandoned properties ordinance. As you know, there are over a thousand abandoned properties in Patterson, but there wasn't a list. And the ordinance created an inventory so that if anyone was interested in doing anything with these ice stores and crime magnets, they can identify where these actual abandoned properties are and do something about it. And just recently, we had a sale generated about a million dollars. Also was the, I introduced the commercial curfew ordinance. We talked about these hotspots. It's reduced crime by seventy-nine percent in these designated areas. In addition to which, two years ago, with economic development, we created a department that dealt exclusively with that very issue. And something that I'm very proud of, we worked with a number of people within the NAACP and outside of our community, was the Green Team slash Environmental Commission. And what that did was it emphasized recycling and you'll see blue recycling cans all over the city. And that was to encourage young people to recycle more, but also generate revenue as well.
Many of you know I've taken over a seat for a former councilperson in the first ward, so I've been here for a little over five, a little over four months. Just yesterday, I had an opportunity to bring forward legislation that's going to allow us to breathe life back into the first ward and reopen the first ward library as a first ward resource and technology center. We've got Microsoft, I've brought in Microsoft with the, in conjunction with the consortium, which is a number of different church organizations in the area, a number of different principals in the area, principals from school twenty-eight, school four, and we have Microsoft coming in and they're willing to offer, to fully outfit the entire facility with technology to help our youth people get to the next level. Next week, I'll be introducing another council president who has allowed me to bring forward another initiative, to bring forward some digital technology that will help our city not only help businesses and organizations like the YMCA and things like that, spearhead and put their services out in forefront, but it will also help the city win money. My very first night, last point, my very first night in the job, I may not have brought legislation forward, but I prevented one of our parks from being taken over by an outside entity that would have prevented Pattersonians from being able to utilize business apart.
One of the legislation that I was able to co-sponsor with, with some of my colleagues is the business curfew, the hotspot. I have now, we have a total of sixteen, I just was able to put Twelve Avenue in there, so now we have a total of six just in the fourth ward alone. One of the next legislation that I put together with Council State, who is no longer here, is that we wanted to do something for veterans. And what I find is that veterans for, are disabled or they have a percentage of what they're disabled. Your normal deduction is two fifty if you're, if you're a vet, but if you're a disabled vet, I think the percentage should be from your property tax deductions by how you are disabled. And we were able to put that together to, we presented to the state and the community for them to put that in place. And one of the other things that I enjoyed working on was when we started the recycling. And one of the ladies from the Delta, Orde McDowell, sat on that team. And what we tried to do is that if we could increase the revenue for the recycling, then we can help the city. And we bought all those recycling cans to help us to bring in more revenue and it did increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Our next question is going to be for... Our next question is going to be for Frau McDowell, Commissioner Simmons, Commissioner Rivera, and Commissioner, well, Mr. Luis Velez, all right? This is where you guys are here, all right? How will you as a councilperson handle the influx of homeless people and panhandling throughout the city of Patterson?
I don't know about a minute, but I could tell you this. Other states are doing it, they're employing their homeless. They're standing on the corners, it's a desperate time for a lot of people. They're holding up signs saying, "We'll work for food." Well, you know what? Most of them are not working for food. They want a few bucks. A lot of them have addiction problems. But you know what? We have four hundred nonprofit organizations in the City of Patterson. Where's their role, their responsibility? Why is it you're a nonprofit organization, you're taking in a lot of money from your congregations and from grant money that come through the state, but yet we have all these people on the streets? The whole purpose of those organizations was to help the very people we're talking about. But what we need to do is maybe through community development, find a little funding, let's get them off the corners. If it's food that they want, let's get them on the streets, let them work a little bit, and maybe we can even compensate them. That's what I think. Thank you.
To answer the question, it's, for me, it's simple. I am a member of Patterson Cares, as I said in my opening, and we don't just feed people. We find, we talk to people, and we find out why they are in the situations they're in, whether it's homeless or why they're panhandling. But we introduce them to the services that they need. You will find, in many cases, that the services are available, but people don't know how to get to the services. So we can continue to do that, work with the nonprofits that are in the city, as Councilman, I mean, former Councilman Gao said, and introduce them to the service, because often, again, like I said, you'll find that the services aren't available, we just have to get the people to the service.
In order to serve as the community, you need to identify, you know, who you serve. We need to identify those individuals that are out there, and also point them out in the right direction. We have a lot of resources, and many times, a lot of elected officials don't take the time to educate our residents to where the resources are at. We have a lot of resources at the county level, we have churches, we have a lot of nonprofits. But again, we have to identify. I don't think the city has done that as of yet. I know we have county officials that, that that's their primary job, to understand where our homeless people are. But it is bigger than that. It comes also, as a councilman, you also have to be careful on the type of organizations that you bring to the city. A lot of these people come from outside of the city, to be honest, and they're out there. I'm not going to say that they're wrong for being out there. It might be a burden to some, to some people, but you know what? You've got to understand what actually happened to them in order to judge them. I'm not going to be the councilman that's going to point a finger, I'm not going to be the councilman that's going to try to help everyone. But to answer your question, is, we have to identify what their needs are first, in order to understand how to help them. Thank you.
Being a community leader in the City of Patterson for many, many, many years, I don't need to be sitting in the council seat to be identifying what's the problem of the homeless and what are the problem of panhandling people out here. I've been working with every organization that I've been working, trying to feed those homeless. It's a social problem, it's a qualitative issue going on in the city. When we come to our city and we see every entrance of the city with a panhandling problem, we need to tell the other cities to give us a hand. Probably they're pushing them in here because they say, "Go to Patterson, whatever goes in Patterson goes." Okay? And we have to stop that. We have to stop passing the ball to everybody, passing the ball to everybody. We need to pull our pants all up on the sleeve and work for them and be compassionate, because people out there need compassion and work for them.
All right, and we're going to move on to the next question. Our next question will be for Mr. Var, Commissioner Cleese, Councilman Sayah, and Al, Big Al, Al Zeez, from Sixth Ward. All right, here we go. The question is, "The nonprofit organization that wants to build a hotel and conference center near St. Joe's Hospital, that said it would need a pilot payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the city. What are your thoughts on this possibility?" I know you've got ahead starting a newspaper, but I think we need to really understand.
So I think the pilot program would be a great program for this hometown situation. A one hundred and fifty-room hotel would provide many jobs for residents here in Patterson. The pilot program is a program where you pay a portion of the taxes, but the portion that Patterson keeps is larger than the amount that it would keep if you paid actual straight-out taxes. So we need to make sure that that program is administered properly, that we don't give them a two-dollar pilot. We give them a pilot that would be comparable to the amount of money that they would pay in taxes. We need to make sure that when they do say they're going to hire Patterson people for these jobs, it's not just the cleaning jobs, it's serious jobs in the hotel. The hotel would bring in revenue because people who come to visit our attractions will be able to have somewhere to stay, not just for the hours while they come and look at the pool, that they can stay overnight. And the hospital already have a viable use for the hotel. So I think it would be a fan of this idea to have the pilot program.
Councilman Var, you ready to answer that question?
One of Patterson's many issues is the lack of ratables to support city services. The city must use everything its power to attract new development, which will lead to temporary construction jobs, permanent white and blue collar employment, new ratables, stabilize the neighborhood, and increase property value. The pilot program would have to be constructed in such a way to attract the developer, but also ensure that the city is getting their fair share in revenue. If done correctly, the pilot has the potential of helping to stabilize Patterson's tax base and even attract smaller development, which will ultimately increase ratables and lower taxes for the homeowners.
I've been opposed to pilots in the past, but this particular pilot is powerful because, one, the land which the hotel will be built on is not generating any tax revenue at the moment. Second, council would have to adopt an ordinance creating a hotel tax. I'm opposed to taxes, but a hotel tax would actually affect out-of-towners, so it's a bedroom fee, just staying the night or a few nights. And think about all the revenue we've missed without having a hotel. If you've had a loved one, if you're from out of town, you've had a loved one in the hospital, they've given vouchers, these individuals want to stay overnight to stay in Saddle Brook at the Marriott. We've missed out on revenue. If you've gone to a wedding at the Brownstone and want to stay overnight, same, you'd have to either go to Wayne or a surrounding area where they have a hotel. So that's why this pilot is appealing, and it also would create jobs, construction jobs, full-time positions, and part-time positions. Not to mention the fact that it would help rent, it would furnish our reputation. We need a hotel in this city at the very least. Thank you.
Pilots are not always a bad thing. Investors do need incentive to come into the city, but we cannot give them a sweetheart deal where they run away with everything from our city. I'm for short-term pilots, get the developer in, help, you know, give them a pilot to break that he needs to get, or she needs to get the development up, then after that, they need to pay their fair share. But with each pilot, we have to make sure, that was in the details, we have to make sure that Pattersonians get the jobs. Too many times, people come from outside our city, come reap the benefits, and then they go to our homes in Wayne, go to our homes in West Milford, while we're still struggling. That's the key with the pilots. We have to make sure that whenever we give out our Patterson residents, get benefited from it. The hotel, once again, I saw the plans, we approved that on the planning board. It's a great move to the area. Across the street, we approved the medical college. This is going to trickle down into the South Patterson area, there's a lot of development going on, so this makes further the ratings that we need, so it reduces our taxes. But it cannot be long-term. It cannot be twenty-five, thirty-year, where they go home with all the money and we're left out with nothing. Thank you.
We're going to move on to our next set of questions, and then some of them will come to the floor table.
Thank you, some of them. All right. "The Patterson Falls is a hidden jewel. What are your ideas to strategically construct a marketing campaign for it?" And we're going to start that question with former Councilman Gao, Councilman McCoy, Councilman Sayah, Councilman Jackson, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Al Macott. Thirty seconds.
I want a little credit, because I'm the representative here from the second ward today, okay? My vision, the two thousand was to make the Great Falls a national historical park. That was my vision and my plan, and it is today. Hinscliffe Stadium, we owned it, we sold it to the state, now we want to spend money, and we want to redevelop the entire area. How are we going to afford to do this? It's impossible. Let us sit down with the state, the state now owns it, let's work, let's work something out collectively, and maybe we can meet that goal. But the way it's sitting right now, thirty seconds later, we're all in.
Thank you. Very impressive.
May I remind everybody that I'm running for council, I'm not running for mayor. And we have to understand that there is a distinction. And sometimes, as council, because most council people have an aspiration to be mayor, it creates a problem, because you're sitting on the council trying to beat a mayor on the council. Doesn't work. We have to create a vision, certainly, and one is there, for the Great Falls, Hinscliffe Stadium, to be incorporated in the national park, and to develop that area and a plan to grow. We have seen where development follows the river, and we need to make sure the river's cleaned up, and we can spur economic development from that industry as well. Thank you.
When I think of one of our newest national parks, I think about a larger marketing campaign. Three things that were noted for in Patterson: Great Falls, great food, and great people. And that would be the overarching outreach to individuals, to attract people here. We've also been pushing to make Patterson the permanent home of New Jersey Hall of Fame. We also want to bring other museums. But there's got to be some type of restaurant, cafe, theater, for people to come here, not only to spend a little time, but to spend a little money. Thank you.
This is not going to happen.
Well, I would definitely have to agree with Councilman McCoy, and you're not the mayor, but we do have to have people who come forward with great ideas, good ideas to pass them along to the administration. One of the ideas that I had was, is an empty factory building right across the street from there, we could take that place and make it into a cafe, a restaurant lounge, where restaurants that are located across the town can benefit by having a satellite location there, and people who come in and visit Patterson can be introduced to different cuisines at one location, and we can share the one tax bill in one facility.
You know, I think that we need to, as we wanted to, for the historic history of the Great Falls, the Hinscliffe Stadium, and I always say that you have to have a vision, you have to think way beyond, because if you can't think way beyond, then you can't think of what you can do for the city. And I remember saying someone was trying to do something with Hinscliffe Stadium, and they were saying that there's no parking station, but if you go to the parking center in Brooklyn, you're bussed in from somewhere else. So we have to try to think outside of that, and we can do something for that, we can find space somewhere else, but we need to start having a vision, and when you can have a vision, then you can see something different, and I can see that. Thank you.
To Anthony Pavar, former Councilman Gao, Commissioner Simmons, Vladimir Rivera, Commissioner Cleese, Luis Velez, Al Zeez. All right. What keeps you up at night regarding the City of Patterson? Forty seconds.
What keeps me up at night regarding the City of Patterson is my concern for our future. Right now, we're in a critical financial situation, we have critical problems concerning our school, and our schools raise our babies, and we need to worry about that, because those children are our future. If they're not being educated properly, and they have nothing to look forward, in this beautiful city that we call home, there is a problem, and that's what keeps me up at night, concerning the city of Patterson.
Listen, nobody's going to answer that question in thirty seconds, but I've got to tell you
something. I live in the second ward, I sleep well at night. I love Patterson, New Jersey. Patterson's my home. If we're going to talk about what's going to keep us up all night, everything is going to keep us up all night. Look at the state of the city, and just look at the state of our mayor's office now. If anything needs to be concerned about, that's what we all need to be concerned about. Thank you.
We topped the record, twenty-five seconds.
This actually works in my paper. What keeps me up at night lately, it's been the budget woes, budget deficits, budget deficits for the school district that will continue into next year, the crime, the prostitution that I have to witness when I walk outside of my door in the third ward, when I'm walking to the store with my son, and where we're looking at drug paraphernalia on the ground, remember now, I'm walking the streets trying to keep people from shooting each other, those are the things that keep me up at night. So, like you said, well, actually, this works for me, so, thirty seconds.
What keeps me up at night is following city business for the last ten years and noticing that nothing has changed. There's lack of check and balances in government. We have to change, and we conduct business, and we continue to conduct business the same way, and nothing changes. All we see is negative change in the city. The submission of irresponsible budgets and the lack of oversight from so much of our council members, council not being fiscally responsible and holding every administration accountable for their decisions. What also keeps me up at night is listening from them often, that they're not aware of many of the things that are happening.
Would you stop saying that? Because that's not wrong, nobody's saying it.
I wrap that up, I was doing interrupts. If you watch Channel Seventy-Seven, that same quote, or read the paper, they often say, "Well, we're not aware." Thank you.
We can just respect the rules, to respect each other. Thank you.
What keeps me, what keeps me up at night? I live in a neighborhood where my neighbors think that at eight o'clock at night is time to start playing the music. So that's being real. That's what keeps me up at night. What keeps me up at night is I have a thirty-year-old nephew that lives with me, and when he's around at the house, I don't sleep because of the city streets here in the City of Patterson. I'm a mother, I'm a daughter, I'm an aunt, but my nieces and nephews are my children. So what keeps me up at night is them. But what kept me up last night was the statement that the young Ms. McCoy made last night at the city council meeting about how we have all been treating each other. That kept me up last night because she tugged at my heart. That kept me up last night, because she tugged at my heart. And if she did not tug at everyone's heart last night, then we are heartless people, and what are we doing all of this for?
That's right.
Besides having a fair debate. But, but simple in these. All the issues that they have brought up keep me up. But if you don't have the call of service from the heart to resolve that, no matter that, you're gonna, uh, take the seat and do nothing. The fifth ward councilman had done that, because he don't have the call of service, and you have to open your eyes, because people that wanna get in here had the same interest. I'm not talking about the fiscal, I'm sorry. But you know who I'm talking to. I just wanna let you know that they don't move it for a political agenda, personal agenda, and to move one community, I wanna move all the community forward, because I got the call of service to all.
I'm gonna keep it real. What keeps me up at night is the safety of the streets. I've lost friends to gun violence, I've lost students to drug overdoses, and I've laid down at night, sometimes that I think, is my nephew gonna be nice, I'm just gonna be gunned down? I don't live in a nice area, I live right on Main Street. My friend died across the street, I don't know if the bullet's gonna go through my, my living room window, we see it happen all the time. That's what really keeps me up at night. Who we gonna lose next to the sense of violence in our streets?
As many people know, many people run in a platform of recreation and education and things of that nature when it comes to campaigning. Uh, my question is gonna go to, uh, Councilman Jackson, uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Cotton, and then we'll work our way back here to, uh, Ms. Brevard, and we'll go to finish with our Councilman of the Third Ward, uh, Bill McCoy. What is your platform when it comes to youth in the city of Patterson, recreation, and education? And I know it's a brief, I'm gonna give you thirty-four seconds.
Well, first of all, it's, it's, uh, creating positive imagery for our young people to make sure that they understand that they, they can succeed right here. My son, who, uh, is an aspiring athlete as well, I have an opportunity to send him out, and I'm keeping him home to set the example that we can have students that do well and excel here as well. All of my children are on the honor roll, and I know that we can make sure that the rest of our children is doing the same thing. I've been spearheading a, a program to try to keep more of our standout students that are being recruited and pulled out of our school system, keep them home, so they can be the good actors that's helping to regenerate, you know, our homeschool district.
Recreation is so very important for our children, because they need something besides schoolwork. So recreation is, is, is something that they need. And you know, I can say that the city of Patterson has plenty of teams. We have teams that need support. I get the calls all the time from the teams that need support, because you got kids or, or children that cannot afford to be part of this team, they do not have the thousand dollars, they do not have the fifteen hundred dollars. So we, as a community, gonna have to try to do the best we can to help them be part of this. Because once our kids understand that they can compete, it brings out the best in them. It brings the best out of them. And I remember one time going to Patterson Catholic, and the guy said to me, oh, you don't have any kids here. I said, I don't need no kids here, all children in Patterson are my children. So we need to go to start going through these games and participate and do a thing with our community. Thank you.
Chief, put your money where your mouth is. I supported a separate line item for recreation in the city budget, that was revenue new children, and folks labeled that a tax, and it went the other way. You ought to invest in your children and invest in your programs. If you're not willing to do that, you're not getting very far. Every school ought to be a recreational center in the city of Patterson, where you are today. In this generation, can be a recreational center. So every new development, and every school ought to be a community school with a gymnasium. And if you go to Passaic County Tech, you can become an Olympic swimmer. Why? You have an Olympic-sized swimming pool. Why are we building schools today without a swimming pool? That means our children will never be able to break swimmers, because they don't have access. We didn't make sure the educational department properly funds education, which means authority efficient education for every child, not those who are in wealthy communities or where their parents can afford it.
All right, we're gonna move on with, uh, Mr. Simmons. We're gonna go to, uh, Commissioner Rivera, Commissioner Cleese, uh, Louis Velez, and I would say, cleanliness is a major problem here in the city of Patterson. If elected, what would you like to see done differently to address the problem of cleanliness in our neighborhood?
Cleanliness is, is a major issue. I don't always receive the services that I'm supposed to get when it comes to street cleaning on, on my block. However, I am a homeowner, and I do have a responsibility to make sure that the front of my house and surrounding areas are clean. So we have to begin to not only hold, uh, DPW responsible, and the city responsible, but we also have a responsibility ourselves, and we have to teach our children that same thing. Uh, I've watched children, I've actually stopped, pulled over and stopped children and made them pick up the things that they've thrown on the ground, just because, uh, they were standing next to a garbage can and decided to throw it on the ground anyway.
This is another quality of life, uh, issue that we have going on in the city. We have many ordinances in the books, but they don't, they don't get enforced. Many of us maintain the front of our property clean, but others don't. But there's no accountability. The administration, you don't see inspectors going around penalizing those homeowners that don't live in the city, because they don't actually, they don't really care about what goes on in the city. They only care when the taxes go up. We need to start enforcing on ordinances. Also, we gotta stop subcontracting the garbage pickup. I, I, you know, I've been going around knocking on doors, and the neighbors complain all the time that sometimes they're gonna pick up the garbage when they have too much garbage, sometimes they act, you know, to behave. And you know what? We gotta, we gotta cut this nonsense. In order to hold people accountable, they gotta work for the city, and right now, the company that picks up the garbage doesn't work for the city. Let's enforce their ordinances. Thank you.
I think neighborhood associations, I saw Ms. Nettie Rivera coming here, and she's always pushing neighborhood associations, and I think if a neighborhood gets on the same accord, we can all vote together to make our city better. It is all of our responsibilities. Earlier today, we were at the AARP meeting, and Councilman Seiya said that there's something that they do in the sixth ward. So if there's something that's being done in the sixth ward, and it's being done, and it's very productive, we need to share that information and pass that information on to other wards, because we are all one community. So if there's something that's working in another ward that could benefit the whole community as a whole, which is the whole city, then I think we ought to share it.
See, every, every ward has different issues regarding the, uh, cleanliness of the, of the ward. In the fifth ward, we have a lot of buildings, a lot of, uh, people that come from different countries, and we have to educate them, we have to teach them. At the same time, we have to talk to all those, uh, land landlords, that they need to take their property, that they need to put garbage cans for their tenants, and orient them what is the proper way to do things in the fifth ward. Not only that, uh, I've been doing that work before, being the councilman, trying to orient people, cleaning back, you know, cleaning, uh, front, front lawns and, and the different places in the fifth ward. And the other thing is, um, uh, Council, uh, some of the women knows that I like, I love Allen Town, so I'm getting ready when I become a councilman, they're gonna don't make me a super dissipate to one breakdown here in Patterson, to clean the fifth ward.
Commissioner Cleese pointed out a program that was created in the sixth ward as a part of our neighborhood association. It's a quality of life committee, where we, as the stakeholders, have a super responsibility, and we issue what are called courtesy notices to our neighbors. Say, for instance, they're not maintaining their property, we'll knock on the door and give them the courtesy notice, and as a neighbor, you have that courtesy to remedy the problem, and if you don't, you will go to the appropriate authorities. But I think it starts with neighbors taking ownership of their neighborhoods, and making sure that it all starts at home. A clean home makes, makes everyone feel better, and it brings neighbors together, which is what we strive to do. Thank you.
Well, this is a joint question, and we're, we're close to the nine o'clock hour, and, um, these will be the last two questions. My question, uh, that we're reading for you guys. Public safety is a major issue here in the city of Patterson, the illegal guns, the safety, the overall problem. What is your platform for public safety for your, uh, if you are elected, uh, councilman or councilman of the ward? Well, sorry, wait, Councilman Jackson, Al Alaziz, uh, did I get it? Okay, all right. Councilman Ruby Cotton, and Councilman, uh, Al Alaziz.
One of the issues that needs to be addressed is our police department. There's a lack of respect for our community, there's a lack of desire, there's security. I can tell you one thing, there's certain things that will never, ever happen, we need just laying down the side. I fight for it as tough, as hard as I possibly can. If I can't get the support, then I'll come to you and I'll let you guys know. I'm, many of us don't know that we have a, an officer from our community, who went to school in our community, who has lived here for, has been a, been a Patterson police officer for twenty-eight years, and he's been home on suspension for doing his job. But we have a lot of other officers who are not from this community, who steal from, from kids that are not doing the right thing on the corner. We need, you know, strong leadership that's willing to take that on.
One of the things, uh, public safety platform that we've been bringing up throughout the campaign, I'm running for sixth ward councilman. We wanna bring a, uh, a precinct or substation into our wards. We are the third largest city in the state of New Jersey. Newark has precincts, Jersey City has precincts. When the police are in your community, that presence is felt, people feel safe, the police officers will know their neighbor. The same cop that comes to that precinct is patrolling your neighborhood, they're in your neighborhood, we have the same community policing going on. And we have a location, on Main Street, in South Patterson, the library downstairs, nothing's being done, or nothing's being utilized. We wanna bring, we wanna be proactive instead of reactive, and have our community, our police in our communities, not in, um, headquarters and all that.
Public safety. As I said before, in two thousand and eleven, the government chief did that, um, after the state workers, he did nothing with the public safety. He did not touch the police and fire department, they kept every benefit that they had. And until something can be changed on that level, uh, coming from the state, there's not much that we can do with our public safety, with our police and fire. But hopefully, we can, as I say, get our kids, our kids more interested in becoming officers, and I say that we, as a community, have to help them, because everyone knows the starting salary is not much. But I remember saying to someone, they said, you wanna come out of poverty, just become a policeman or a firefighter, and you will come out of poverty. And we have to make sure, we have to say that to our community, we need to, we need to, to wanna be a policeman and firefighter.
We have a real big problem when it comes to the police department, and that's a lack of leadership. Your police chief doesn't live in the city of Patterson. Why should anybody care? I introduced a plan called Walking Police Back on Our Streets. They're called Class Two Police Officers, fully trained, through the police academy, with full arresting powers, and they must live in the city of Patterson. But instead, they settle for a lesser version, which is called a Class One, that has no enforcement power, other than to write tickets and harass the people downtown. You got people dying on the streets, you got crime everywhere, what's the single most important thing? Police presence and visibility to deter crime.
Final question before it wraps up, safety, this will be for Antonette Brevard, Councilman McCoy, Commissioner Simmons, Commissioner Rivera, and Commissioner Cleese. I believe that helps everyone. Last year, we had a meeting at the Passaic County Community College with gang members to talk about a cease shooting, because we had too many shootings. That's the forgotten about population that we generally do not talk to and address. That meeting produced a truce for a period of time. What would be your plans to work with that set of the citizens of Patterson? Thirty seconds.
Just like every other citizen, they need services too. I don't think anybody, as a child, saying, I wanna be a gang member, this is what I aspire to be. So maybe we need to take the time and find out what is it that they want to be? Are they interested in any kind of training that would lead them to a more productive life? What is the issue that's keeping them out on the streets? And yes, talk to them again about the truth for the Sunday.
I think the initiative was about respect and having credibility with folks, and letting them know that you understand and care about their issues and what's important to them. I'm glad tonight to see that somebody has, uh, introduced and talked about the McCoy Plan, which is to work with DPW and sanitation and shared service agreement to make sure that we have jobs in our community for those that are on, uh, the edges, to bring them in, retrain, and redirect them so they can have a productive life. The reason many kids go into that kind of activity is a core education, we lost them in the fourth grade, and an inability to get a job once you've gotten yourself in trouble. By creating a pathway to a job through DPW and other initiatives, we can reclaim and, and reintroduce our young people to productive lives. So I think that would be a great idea.
I'm just gonna continue doing what I've always been doing. I've always met with that population, I was part of that process. Um, so for me, it's just going out and doing what I've been doing, not just talking to them to find out why they're doing what they're doing, but also having programs where we train them on resume writing, we train, we do mock interviews, we help them get clothes to go on interviews, so that they are dressed appropriately. So a lot of people can talk about it, but many people aren't walking the walk. Well, when I'm walking the streets, I see very few people who actually, well, except Mr. Rapper, but I'm actually out there walking the streets, getting involved, getting my hands dirty, and, and showing them that there's a better way of life.
As a councilman, I'm gonna be open to working with, with everyone in the city. But we also have to understand the needs. For example, we gotta, we gotta start addressing it from, um, early, from the early childhood. We have a need here for recreation, we also have a need for, uh, we need to fix our parks. For many years, when I started working at Passaic County, I heard a lot of rumors that we were, that the city of Patterson was not getting open space funding. This is funding that you get to improve the parks. And I raised a question to one of the freeholders, and I was told that we were not applying for the funds. What I, why I tell you this? We have a tendency of losing resources that are available to the city. As a councilman, I'm gonna make sure that I'm gonna take advantage of any resource available, and make sure that those people that are in need, uh, take advantage of them. So we have to work, and we have to make sure that we take advantage of every, every resource that's out there in order to help everyone in the city. Thank you.
We all talk about what we're gonna do, and, you know, when we get to a certain point. As Commissioner Simmons said, he's already doing it, I'm already doing it. My headquarters is located on Seventeenth Ave, and there's a group of young men that's there every day when we go there. And what you do, you have to meet these young people where they are. I get out of my car, I speak to them, they speak to me. People say, but aren't you afraid... People say, "But aren't you afraid to be on Seventeenth Ave?" No. Why? Because I respect those young men and they respect me. I don't fear them and they don't fear me. We want our young people to do better. We as adults have to show them better. We have to show them that they belong here in this community. Set up some apprenticeships with the local merchants in the area and say, "You know what? When these kids, you know, they're in high school, everybody's not meant to go to college." So we need to make sure that we're also planning for that group of children that are not going to go to college. Let's set up some apprenticeships, some internships. Let's get them some training so then, when, once they graduate and think they're adults, now they have something, some type of resource to fall back on.
As I said before, we have to continue doing this. This is a teamwork effort. We always want to talk to the 98% of the people that want to do better in the city. But we never go down to talk to the 2% that we need to talk to. We have to work together to them. We have to talk to the queer, the blood, the Latin king, the la pintario. We have to talk to any kind of members around and let them know that they could do better in the future and move forward if they get the right resources. We have to work hard at this and bring the resources to our city for giving social services that they really need. And start from home too. This is a cooperative situation. We have councilmen, person, and legislator. We need to get together and involve and roll out a leader work together.
We want to thank all of the candidates and all of you for coming out. We want to thank the Patterson Housing Authority for hosting us. We want to thank the Patterson NAACP for putting this board together and working with us, and Senator Wimberly and myself. At this time, we're going to call for two-minute closing remarks from the candidates. We're going to start from the far end with Councilwoman Ruby Cotton. And we're just going to move our way down and you do have two minutes.
Thank you. I would just like to say, my name is Ruby Cotton. I am seeking reelection for my Fourth Ward City Council seat. I've been there four years. I want to do another four years. I have been involved for the last 40 years. I started my career out as being a county committee. I've been around with my husband, City Council on the Fourth Ward. I have partnership with many organizations because I believe that we have to do that today to get anything done. Because it's always a we. I cannot do it by myself. It's a we. And I know if we stand together and we work with each other, that we can get all this accomplished. I have been involved with different organizations. I'm a member of the National Council Negro Women. I'm a member of the Kasey County African American Women 100+. I have been a member for the last 20 years. I'm a Gold Life member of the NAACP. And I say that you have to be community minded. I just didn't get started doing this. And this was not my career to be an elected official. Councilwoman Amy said to me, "Councilwoman Ruby, you've been doing this for the last 30 years. You should run for council." And I have the support of Councilwoman Amy now to do this. She's supporting my reelection bid because it's a we. It's a we. We can get things done and we can get things changed. And I got to say that it's important that we listen to each other. And I want to say to you that I'm seeking my second term for the Fourth Ward for the City Council. Cotton is a name that you can trust. And I can tell you one thing. When you vote with Cotton, you'll never be forgotten. Thank you.
There's none that rhymes with Adelies. Thank you to the people that organized this and thank you for everyone that came out today. My name is Adam Delzies. I am 1A on the ballot. Please spread the words to your friends and family that I live in the Sixth Ward. My intentions is a genuine intention to do what's right. I want to serve the residents of the Sixth Ward. My intentions is to be councilman of the Sixth Ward. Councilwoman McCoy said earlier, "I'm not looking to be mayor. I'm not looking to fight with people and not work with people. I'm going to work with the assembly people, the administration, the county government to get things done." Our city is in trouble. We need to be all hands on deck and share the same vision to get things done. When you see a budget gridlocked that we can't even pass a simple budget, we can't, there's some people on the council that can't go in a room with certain individuals to get things accomplished. That's how bitter and divisive this council and this government has gotten. I want to bring new energy, new ideas. We can't keep doing the same thing over and over again. All wards are fed up. People in my ward, we knocked down 3,000 doors and they have that same feeling. They're fed up with the constant bickering that goes on. I'm wrapping up. And I do want to say, as we're going to wrap up, Assemblyman Benjamin Sumter, if Governor Christie comes here and tries to bully these two, we need to stand behind them. Because they're fighting for us. And let me tell you, don't let this governor come in and bully you if you got your back, alright?
I'll take Christie down with one blow to the belly.
My desire and my objective is to return the enthusiasm that we once saw a few years back when Benji ran for city council. My desire is to return the confidence back to the seat that we unfortunately lost. To remain committed, to remain committed to my word. Early in my last campaign, I pledged my salary back to the community. And I did so. I provided a scholarship for a great student, an outstanding student who has a 3.9 GPA, Zaire Williams at Kennedy. These are the things that need to be spotlighted. And I'm not, you know, trying to blow my own whistle, horn. I'm just trying to talk about how committed I am to my word. To return the confidence back to the government, to return the confidence back to the First Ward and to hopefully gain the support where our community will once again come back and work together to make sure we have, we see improvements. That's the only way that we're going to see improvements. I drove past a car today and he just took his garbage and threw it out the window. I don't care how many DPW workers we hire. If we don't change the mentality, change the mindset of our community, we will never change. So I'm here to return a positive message, to return a positive direction, to make sure that we all can look at ourselves in a positive light and no longer allow people to shed a negative light on our community. That's my objective.
In my opening statement, I talked about how Patterson's the only home I've ever known. So for all of us here, Patterson is our home. And we're a family. We're one Patterson. So all the problems that are within every ward affect us all. We shouldn't be isolated to one specific ward. And our challenges, crime, taxes, quality of life, we discussed it all. As someone who advocates and legislates, we've addressed them. We've addressed the crime with the commercial curfew ordinance that's regulated the hours of operation for these establishments in the hotspots. With taxes, we've introduced legislation to help spur economic development, whether it is creating a department that deals with economic development or participating in the Garden State Growth Zone that our delegation, our assembly delegation strongly supported. And then with quality of life, because I am an ardent advocate for early childhood education. We shall leave. We have built a preschool for all children in Patterson to have a safe place to play. We opened up a new preschool so that 75 three- and four-year-olds would have an opportunity to get a quality education right here in our home, Patterson. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm running on a strong record of results and someone who always responds when I receive the call. 2A on your ballot. Thank you very much.
Rules of the last once again. I think I have a perfect attendance in the city council. I go to every meeting, workshop, special meetings, and when there are issues of the Fifth Ward or other wards, I always advocate for the community. You have seen me there. In the two past quarters I have attended, a party is more important to staying in the meeting, to stay in the forum. We don't want to repeat the same thing in the Fifth Ward. When I ran in 2012, I went to that council after I lost that election and I say, "I give the Lord the blessing that I lost this election." You know why? Because I lost an election, but I lost the willingness to keep on serving the community. And that's why you see me every day in that council. That's why you see me in every ward when there's a problem, you see me there. Why? Because I was called to serve. And the person that you see here is the same person that you're going to see in the councilman for everybody, for everybody. No matter where you came from, no matter who you believe in, and no matter what nationality you have, you and me are the same. Because I've got to look at your needs and I've got to work toward those needs. On May 10th, please break true and real religion to the Fifth Ward because some people are true, but they're not real. God bless you.
A lot has been said here tonight by all of us. And most of your minds walking into the door have already been made up. But I'm glad that you were here and you took the time to listen to some of us that you have not had the opportunity to listen to. The Fifth Ward in the city of Patterson sits in the center of the city of Patterson. We need someone in the center ward of the center of the city of Patterson that can reach out and bring everyone together. We live in a community. And in that word, there's the word unity. We need someone that's going to bring unity back into the community. And I believe that I am that person. I have leadership skills. I have had the community service skills. I continue to serve my community. Being a member on the school board for five years, my commitment has been to the students and I have not shied away from that responsibility. I am still serving those children. I will serve those children for as long as I am on that school board. We need people that are going to be true to their call. And whatever, if that call is to serve, then serve. And serve with dignity, serve with grace, but most of all, serve with respect. Because we all deserve respect. I am Crystal Cleese. I am running for Fifth Ward Council seat. My number is 3A on the ballot. Cleese plus community equals progress.
I'm just going to ask you one question. And I want you to think about it. Go on and think about it. Are we better off today than we were 10 years ago? I'm going to let you think about that. That's how I made my decision to run for office for the Third Ward. By the way, my number on the ballot is 2A. Our current councilman has a comment previously. He said that he's also there to evaluate what is presented to him. A previous question said, "What keeps me up at night?" Well, I'm going to tell you what keeps me up at night. The other day, I attended an SNAM meeting, Eastside Neighborhood Association, where I made a comment regarding the responsible budgets. The current councilman said that he only has power to vote in favor or against a budget. And under the former government that they have, they could increase any line by two-thirds and they could decrease it with majority votes. So why I'm telling you this? I gave you an example before how we have a lot of overstated budget lines, salary lines in the budget, but then recreations keep getting reduced. The gentleman also passed a comment regarding the tax. Yes, it was a tax. It was a recreation tax. It started as a noble idea. It was going to add to the current budget that we have there. But you know what? The administration turned their little eye and said, "You know what? If we raise $2 million, we're going to decrease $2 million from the budget." So the ending result would have been same amount of resources. So you got to understand as councilman, you got to understand what's presented to you. So I'm going to ask you a question. When your car breaks down, you go to a mechanic, correct? When you're sick, you go to a doctor. Well, I'm asking you, would you want to have a certified municipal finance officer looking after the best interests of the taxpayers and the residents of the city? You need to understand everything that's presented to you. So you know what? We can talk, and the reason I'm going after him is because he's been serving. I cannot go after all the candidates. It's nothing personal against him. I just got to judge him based on his thoughts. I want you to do the same. I want you to judge him based on his thoughts. Is the city moving in the right direction? Are we better off today than we were 10 years ago? That is the question that I want you to ask. And remember, we sometimes, and I'll wrap it up. We have to remember, whoever you put in that chair is going to make decisions on your behalf that is going to affect you every day. So let me be careful who we vote for. Thank you. 2A on the ballot.
My name is Kenneth L. Simmons. I am 4A on the ballot. I am a candidate for the Third Ward Council seat. I'm running because the Third Ward needs change. The residents are looking for change. It's time for new energy, a new vision. It's time for regular meaning, visibility. As we have suppressed crime in different areas of the city, that crime is now moved to the Third Ward. When I moved to the Third Ward 30 years ago, it was the place to move to. I'm a product of the First Ward. But we're looking to educate and empower the residents. Stronger and empowered residents create stronger and empowered blocks. Stronger and empowered blocks create stronger and empowered neighborhoods. Stronger and empowered neighborhoods create a stronger and empowered city. And we are looking to be the change that this city needs.
We can talk, but here's the record. Here's the record of accomplishment and achievement of actually producing results. Were we talking about economic development? We've proven that we can achieve economic development in the Third Ward. Your comments have to at least be believable. The Third Ward is the Third Ward. It's not the First, and it's the Third Ward. In your own mind, in your own mind, in your own mind. Fifth Avenue, we have a candidate who lives, what, 50 feet away from Fifth Avenue? Never been there. Never stepped foot on the property. But you're saying yet you want to represent for them. We have to be truthful in our responses. And we have to be honest with each other. You can challenge, it's a progress. But be truthful about that. We have a gentleman talking about being a mechanic. Do you want a mechanic that only has one tool in his toolbox? Everything comes around to the budget. And this man doesn't understand what the budget is about on the school board. The budget is not an art in of itself. The budget is to support a follow-on efficient education. And if you don't understand that, you understand nothing. You're a minority of children, the best that they're supposed to be, thinking your job is to protect the budget. Your job is to educate children. Your job is to provide resources for children. Are we better off? You tried that the last time you did it. Look at where you are now. This is what used to be known as the notorious Alabama. It's not that anymore. We're in the community center. And in the art of the Third Ward, with decent affordable housing, decent people, quiet on the outside, and people that you can interact with. A daycare center is coming right to this site, not because we just happen, but because we advocate for that. You want change? No, you don't want change. You want positive change. Going backwards is not a choice for whatever. Bring it.
I know most of the folks here are not from the Second Ward. We're lucky if there may be two here tonight. But I showed up tonight. I was invited. And whether the election is not to come. But let me say this about the Second Ward. Four years ago, we got robbed. We got robbed in the Second Ward. With five candidates in that race, it was very hard to weather that kind of circumstance. And as an example, the folks that are here, most of you know who you like and who your candidate is. It can happen to you. Everybody needs to come out, May 10th, and vote. Don't assume anything. Because the worst thing that's happening right now is that they're going to try to rob us again in the Second Ward. This time, they have an absentee ballot program going where you vote by mail. This time, they have an absentee ballot program going where you vote by mail. Normally, three hundred, three hundred and fifty absentee ballots might come out. Normally, three thousand people vote in this election. But when nineteen hundred absentee ballot applications come out, you really need to be concerned. Now, I don't know what's going on here, but in just the second ward, nineteen hundred absentee ballots? It's unheard of. The only way you can do that is to buy a ballot. What I am asking of you, ladies and gentlemen, if you know anyone in the second ward, if you know who I am, if you know what I stand for, you know what my record says, it speaks for itself. I was committed. I was dedicated. I lived my job. I breathed my job. And when my constituents called me, I responded to them. And even people from the third ward and the fourth ward and in the first ward when they called me, I responded to that. So I ask you, if you know someone in the second ward, Aslan Gao, four A, and I'm not just the white guy, I'm the right guy.
I am entering out of heart, and I am proud to say I am from the first ward. Greatness lives in the first ward. We are the home of the National Park, the Great Falls. We are the home to H. Cliff Stadium. We are the home to downtown Patterson. We are the home to a lot of great things, including children. We are the home to the seniors. We are the home to different nationalities. We are the home to Postel Park. And we can be greater and greater and greater, but it's going to take the people. It's going to take integrity. It's going to take respect for all people, not just black people, not just Latino people, the Arabs, the Baghadi's. We have a lot of people over there. We need the support of the entire community to turn it around. Not everything is that good. We do have pockets across. We do have problems like everyone else has. We have homes and neighborhoods that never been boarded up before. Our people are hurting, and I do believe that I can provide the proper leadership. I haven't had experience on the council, but I have had experience in life. I do have leadership abilities. I have served in the Brooklyn community as the treasurer for the last three years. I have served in St. D.C. as the executive director for the last four years. I continue to show up for my community. I have served in the city of Patterson Septakee for two years. I have served the city of Patterson in their services, for inspection services, for the last twelve years. I continue to serve. I can serve all day in P.E.F. because I love working for them and working for the children. I also have worked at the St. Community College for fourteen years. I have a master's degree in public administration. I was born and raised here in Patterson. I am a product of Patterson Public Schools. So I love Patterson. I love the first ward, and I'd love to be the person that helped make a change there. Thank you. I have three A on the ballot for the first ward.
As you can see, we have highly qualified candidates throughout the city of Patterson. But the one point that came across, I think, to everybody, they're not just candidates for the first ward, second ward, third ward, fourth ward, fifth ward, the sixth ward. They represent the entire Patterson. So people need to remember that, that this is not just about war. This is not about nationalities. This is not about that, you know, who may be. Now, the one thing I will say is, I've heard people talk about you have to show respect. You have to be straight. You are in television quite often. Now, last night, I had the opportunity to come on the white city council. Somebody texted me, and I usually entrench in a long day. I don't watch city council. I come in, and it's a long air. Some of the disrespect that is going on here, how do you say that you want somebody to represent? You know, so you think about that in these next thirteen days, wherever it may be. And I'm not even talking about the people who may be representing you on your street as your servant. Think about it, like really. It's almost like a teacher teaching your kids, and the teacher is out there just acting a fool. So we have to realize that Patterson, we do not need to be a laughing stock on Channel Seventy Seven, because people tape it and put it on YouTube and all these other things. You want to be respected. Now, we can agree to disagree as a community. We have fifty-two different nationalities, seventy-seven different dialects in the city of Patterson, and every political affiliation you can probably think of, including when Donald Trump's run, we'll have some people vote for Trump here in the city of Patterson. So you have to realize, I opened up my statement that we are here, myself and Assemblywoman Sumter, as concerned Pattersonans, people that have been born and raised in the city of Patterson, not members of the Democratic Party or Assembly people. We are here because we care. We raised our kids here in the city of Patterson. We live here. We go to the beauty supply center. We go to the barber shops. We shop here. We eat here. So there is not a case that we are out here to maneuver or change anybody's ideas, or what may be. All I ask is, after May tenth, that we come together. I think real leadership will arise after this election. So the people that may have been, the people that you may have been running against, that may need to be your first call. That may need to be your first call, because if you have people running against you, at some point, we need to come together as a community. So we have questions tonight about the Bloods and the Crips and the Yantos and everybody else, but we have adults who are gangsters. You know, what does that say about our community? It's just maybe an educated gangster, and you're going to cut somebody's throat down. We're in this, and we understand how it is. So we deal with Chris Christie. We deal with Republican. We deal with different things. But at the end of the day, we talk to Republicans. We move on, and it's just life. The bottom line is, we have to do what's best for our entire community. So let's not be bitter with each other. I've had individuals not speak to me because I haven't done certain things. I'm like, that is not about this. I'm not looking for a vote. I'm here to do what's best for the community. I have one vote in the ward, and that's it. She has one vote in her ward, that's it. Each of us have one vote in our ward, and that's it. So please, get out here and be an example for our young people. And that's where it goes back to. So our fight in our community should be with Chris Christie. It should be with him to make sure our children get the first to benefit, that we make sure that our early childhood is taken care of, that we are fully funded, that prenatal care and women's health care is not cut continually. Those are the things that we have to fight for. We do not need to fight over silliness, and that's where it comes down to. So when this is said and done, I'm sure, I'm sure, our true leaders will rise, because any draw even falls on the list. At this time, I want to make a couple announcements. This will be available on YouTube, and I want to thank Harold Williams, Ranger Hand. Harold, thank you for taking me tonight. Harold has a YouTube channel, and it will be posted up on YouTube. Knowing Harold, it'll probably be up there tonight, because he doesn't play around. Harold hits it up really quick. We also like to thank Commissioner Corey T. for starting us off. Thank you, Commissioner, for holding staff earlier, getting the video taken. And do not forget, the city courts office will be having city council debates or forums on Channel Seventy Seven. Today was the first and second ward. Tomorrow is the third and fourth ward. Friday is the fifth and sixth ward. Do not forget to get out and vote. We have vote night Tuesday, May the tenth. The polls open at six AM to eight PM. Make sure that you are enrolled and that your voters that you think are enrolled. Now, you are aware, this past year, and I may be wrong, Councilman McCord, I believe we had almost ten thousand people scrubbed from the voter registry of the St. County.
Wow.
Ten thousand. And it's a national issue. It's not just a city county issue. So many people who have not voted since Obama and things like that, they've been scrubbed from the voter registration. Now, yes, yes. So please, make sure you are eligible to vote. You do not walk away from that poll without voting. I don't care what it is. You think your challenge is out, do we got to do? No, we will not have disenfranchised voters in the city of Patterson. Now, do not also forget to vote on Tuesday, June the seventh, is the primary election. Once again, we're not telling you who to vote for, but we need to make sure you're voting so come November that you are voting again, so we don't want you to get your narrative issue. So the primary, you may think it's wrapped up for maybe your candidate or whoever you're going for, but make sure regardless, I don't care what election it is, you get out and vote. We just celebrated fifty years of the Voters' Right Act, and we understand how it was the Edmund Pettus Bridge. And, you know, we have Mr. G. here. The people have fought and headed toward blood, over the right to vote. We should never, never forget to vote. So please, make sure you get out and vote. Last, we close out. Once again, thanking the Patterson branch and the NAACP, our president Reverend Darrell, Reverend Clayton, Kenny Clayton. And we also want to thank my Assemblymate, Shavon Sumter. But most of all, we thank the candidates for taking their time. There are candidates that came out and took their time today. Please, please take note who is here. The only candidate that said that they were not able to make it was released a minute due to a prior engagement. Everybody else that was scared, please take the time. If you don't know, maybe this is a good time to get to know. So thank you. God bless you. Say, "Pam, it's..." We do hear him, which is, sorry, come to God and help us out.